Love being porters. And you know, I think the community needs to really meditate and reflect on how it's gonna solve that problem for those future porters. The second group of folks that I would say were a number of people who made claims about dust, debris, ventilation, circulation throughout the building, it could be caused by something like a plaster ceiling collapse. One of the interesting things is people have asked, you know, how soon did people figure that out? We don't have any, I don't know of any school that has motion detectors, alarms, signals of that kind of thing that would detect, pick up something like a plaster roof falling down. But the debris field was so minimal and so contained in the classroom with its two closed doors, that it just seemed like two closed doors to a classroom. And you'll see tonight when I show you a diagram of Central Campus, the extent of rooms that they were concerned about. You'll be surprised about, I think, the findings of W J E in the room right next to this room, right? But one of the interesting things is there was a claim that through the forced air, you know, it's called out the forced air heating system, that that debris must have been picked up by that forced air heating system and circulated throughout the entire building. We don't have a forced air heating system at Central Campus. It's one of the issues that we face, that we don't have proper temperature control that leads to stress on legacy buildings. We actually have a radiator system. Each room is equipped with a Univent, that Univent brings in fresh air, circulates it out. Those Univents are only systematized to that classroom. And they're timed to go on at three thirty at night and go off at seven A, go start up again at seven A M. At seven A M, someone would say that Univent went on, but when that plaster came down, electricity was lost in that room. So there was no ventilation moving any of that material. And then as the public knows, we published testing of all the material on that that showed, you know, no asbestos, no, you know, toxins in that material that came down. So I think it's important to remember that circulation, the H V A C system is not only outdated, it wouldn't move debris through the entire building, as several people claimed it would. It just doesn't exist. And then also it poses the exact problem that we're talking about, that you have a hundred and fourteen year old building without a modern H V A C system, which keeps the whole building top to bottom in a constant temperature, which most people know you need to preserve, especially a legacy building. So I thought I would just, you know, follow up with that. We had a final person who spoke, who continued to encourage you to look at Central, especially encouraged you to ensure that it's accessible to all, you know, in compliance, both compliance with A D A, and reminded the board of, you know, the efforts that you've had to take a look at Central and spoke to her involvement on the advisory committee. So, you know, that was the perspective there. So that was, that was public comment. At this time, I'm gonna have our chief architect, Eric Sipber, joining us. And I wanna switch over to a slide deck that I put together, just to kinda guide the meeting, kinda switch out. And I'm gonna switch to a report that we received from W J E. These are the forensic architects. So just to remind everybody here, just kind of an overview of Central Campus, and certainly, you know, Eric, if you could help me. You know, overnight, November first, we had this ceiling system, self-contained, in room three ten, which is a mathematics room, northwest corner of the third floor, the top floor of Central Campus, completely failed. Since then, we know that that was plaster placed on a metal mesh. That plaster and metal mesh were affixed to wood furring strips and wood framing by nails. W J E believes that those nails, under stress, time, duration, weight, slipped out. When enough started slipping, they all, all came down. And what that's really, you know, encouraged us to do is to use W J E to look at all of our ceilings. So if I spend every day since walking, you'll, what you would see is you would see holes cut in the ceilings of almost every classroom and space. And what you'll see if you were looking up into those spaces, for example, everyone sitting in here, this is a decorative false ceiling. This isn't a construction ceiling. It's designed to hold the lighting and to hold the venting and be decorative for a space like this. But indeed, there's another ceiling above it, which is the unfinished ceiling. If you went to Central Campus and you walked it, what you would see in that construction zone is you would see the fall ceiling. You might see another ceiling, something like drywall. And then even above that, you would likely see the plaster ceilings. And I'm bringing that up to really point out that in general, when we inspect school buildings, or really any buildings, we're only cutting holes into spaces when we have water damage, when we have cracking, when we have sagging. We didn't have those kind of warning signs in any of our previous reports. We're doing that now. And it really gives you a sense, as you look up, of what is all the way up there. And what we've discovered in an area that I'll show you is, in that third floor north corridor, a number of building methods were used. In the corner that I'll show you, it was mesh with plaster on it, nailed up. If you go into the hallway, it was something called clay and arch, which is almost like a ceramic tile. And then if you go down the whole hallway itself, it was plaster affixed to a much stronger metal lathe. And so we don't know why historically, three different methods were used. We do know, as we went through Central, that at times when there was a reason to explore that, certain rooms, you know, were fixed, right? You know, over a hundred and fourteen years. So I'm gonna toddle away from this, and at any time, just board members, you know, be sure to ask me a question. Eric, is there anything I left out that?
No, yeah.
Kinda doing okay?
Yes.
And is there, you know, is there any board member question? Cause I don't wanna get too far ahead. You know, meeting with W J E, a lot of technical knowledge, they're very expert. What I wanna share with you right now is I wanna take a walk through Central Campus, color-coded from sort of a green, a lime green, and I apologize, some of you know I have some pretty serious color blindness with dark colors. So they call something and you all laugh, I won't be embarrassed. So low risk is in the green, all the way up to high risk, which is in that red color. And then areas that haven't been assessed yet. And this is important, and you might say, well, why are we going over this report now? I think the reason why we're going over it, if I could suggest, is to give you a sense of decisions ahead of you and to give you a sense of how much time we will likely have to invest. Because the amount of time that Central is closed relates directly to the resolution that we would make, you know, to handle this situation and provide in-person learning, which has been your directive. So I'm gonna start at the lower level and just, I'm gonna work my way up. And Eric, if you have anything to add. So this is the very lower level. What you're looking at is you are looking at the cafeteria. And we had the third floor looking at, you know, cleared by about seven fifty-one on Thursday morning. And the school starts at about seven forty-five. And so this is the area of refuge that students were sent to, and the reason why is it's our official area of refuge. It's entirely green, it's been assessed. One thing I wanna draw your attention to, that I think is gonna be something board members will have to, over the next couple of weeks, and even maybe more time, really talk out is, you see that strip of just a little, almost like a lime green on top? That's low to medium risk. We'll get a more detailed report from W J E, but I think you're gonna have to contend with, what does that mean for you? Right? And what might be a solution that W J E might recommend? And with a low to medium risk, how do you want to address that? That'll be a decision that you'll have to make.
I also have a bit of color blindness. Can you circle the part that you're talking about is low to medium?
Yeah, it's in the lower, it's just right down here. That's the only space that we use, it's below ground level.
Okay.
So we're gonna walk it up, I'm sorry, I'm going pretty quickly. I'm gonna walk it up one floor, sorry, a little sense here. Bump this out just a little bit. So now, what you're looking at, and please let me know, a little difficult with this diagram to kinda get it right. You see a big section, those are almost all locker rooms, lock court academy, wrestling room. In the upper right-hand corner, that has not yet been assessed. So that also gives you an idea of, we've gotta get in there and assess that. But as you kinda follow, you see quite a bit of green, this is on the first floor. Those rooms have been assessed. There, there's a little bit of lime green in what's called the Smith foyer, right? Just you see that little difference in shade? And again, I'll try to bump this up as much as I can without losing, sort of my, my mouse is really, my pad is really sensitive. So you see that kinda lime green in the Smith foyer? But then you see coming down the hallway, two hallways, just a little bit of a hallway as well, and then a corner classroom. You've got higher risk, right? You've got medium to high risk.
So is that the orange?
That's that orangish color, right? Maybe salmon, I don't know what we'd call it. You know, and I don't know, Eric, if looking at the schematic with the medium risk, medium to high risk, the sort of lighter lime green, the solid green, I don't know if this is a good place for maybe you to mention to the board. What exactly does that mean, and what are some of the possible repairs that are needed in those orangish areas?
As Dr. McBride mentioned already, this is preliminary, we're still going through the entire school. The W J E's still not over through it completely. And there's a lot of holes that we are still generating to be able to get into the depths of what's all there. So the low risk is really there's, you know, it's like a, either the ceiling's been replaced or there's no ceiling at all. So that's what they consider low risk. It's a fairly new ceiling, like we're all sitting here underneath tonight. And/or there's no ceiling at all, it's just a structure above, and so there's no concern of a ceiling collapsing. When you get into the low to medium risk, it's more of, probably most of it is same as the low risk. There might be some aspect of it that we need to do a little bit more investigative work about, a little bit of that part of that ceiling. We can't pinpoint just general areas that we might have discovered that might need a little bit more attention. And that is something that we'll get into as we move forward with a project of, if we, if the board so chooses to do the corrections here, that'll be assessed at the time. Well, we know that the ceiling is pretty much adequate, but let's take a look at it a little bit more detailed and fix it as we move along with the other ceilings. When we get into medium risk and medium to high risk, those are the ones that we're a little bit more concerned with and we're a little bit more specific about, okay, a lot of the medium risk, and you don't see any medium risk on this particular floor, but when we get into the medium risk, it gets into what Dr. McBride was talking about. Currently, what we've been able to discover, there's like five ceilings in one room. And so to find out exactly what is in those, up at the very beginning of all of that, it's been difficult. So we don't quite have that answered yet. Once they get through all of those ceilings, then we can make a little bit better determination exactly what's going on. Just because of the complexity of the ceiling system that is there, they considered it a medium risk. While you see with the medium to high risk, those are the areas that we think that, okay, we really probably should be, start considering to replace these ceilings and hole in, as a complete system. Not necessarily that it's a immediate failure, possibly. We might have chunks falling off, plaster chunks is what we're talking about. So that might be something that we, let's just get rid of the ceiling so we don't have to worry about that. Then at the high risk is definitely something, okay, we need to remove the ceiling as quickly as we can. As we are currently, the status of that, the high risks are being removed currently as we stand. We just are removing those, and then we'll, based on what the decisions are here tonight, we can move forward with any of the other higher-risk type ceiling systems.
Hey, oh, yeah, sorry.
If it's got five ceilings and it's a high risk, you have to take out all of the ceilings?
Yes. That would be the, our recommendation is to remove all the ceilings, just to get it back to a clean system, so that we know exactly what we have and make it a secure space.
And, you know, you're, the very bottom of this is the newest section of the building. So for example, you see different throughout the building, different ceiling treatments. Some of the newer sections, in the nineteen fifty-eight section, used gypsum or sheet rock, you know, which is incredibly solid. You know, you can look up and you can see how solid that is. Already, there's evidence throughout the building that ceiling removal actually took place. People saw the plaster, said, let's just remove that plaster. We have other ways of, you know, creating a ceiling in the classroom, we don't, we don't need that plaster, you know, up there. And it was taken down, it was replaced, in some cases by drywall, in some cases simply by the drop ceiling to hold lights and vents and electricity and things like that.
So are you checking the drywall too, even though it's?
Yeah, we're, anything that's in the ceiling, it's all cut into.
Okay.
So sometimes what you'd see, Ms. Johnson, in some rooms, is you'll see the sort of fall ceiling, the drop ceiling. You'll see that open a panel, you'll see drywall cut into that, and then you'll see the whatever plaster system is, is above that.
Okay.
Yeah, but back in the nature of construction, back then, they didn't have air conditioning, obviously, in the nineteen oh nine and the nineteen twenty-nine, they didn't have air conditioning, so they made the ceilings as high as possible to get the heat away from where the students were.
Right.
Throughout all the years, they kind of brought that down to be more energy efficient. So yes, a lot of rooms, we are discovering a lot of ceilings and different techniques of how to do that. That was another thing that we're discovering, and that plan is gonna be coming out shortly, showing all the different types of ceilings that the school has within its system.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about what you said. They made the ceilings high to make it hotter?
No, to remove the heat from where the people were sitting. So the higher the ceiling, the heat was up in the, where the sitting was, cause heat rises. So us sitting here at this floor level would eliminate a lot of the heat being where the people were, just because they didn't have air circulation back then.
I have a quick question. Is there a particular reason that the medium to high risk is around the hallways? Is that because of the overlap that you were talking about and the types of ceilings?
Don't know exactly why there was medium risk or high risk, as Dr. McBride mentioned. We don't have an understanding why they did the technique that they did. We have some in the nineteen twenty building, rooms next to each other that have used different techniques of how to create their ceilings. So don't know why, why that happened.
For example, in the nineteen oh nine section of the building, just a little fact, they used more nails than they did in the, what you're looking at the very top would be the nineteen twenty-eight section of the building. They didn't. So it's hard to go back and try to understand why they did. So this is the second floor, and it gives the board a little bit of an understanding. Again, you see a lot of the full green, a lot of the lime green, the lime green, you know, low risk and low to medium risk. So you see quite a bit of that. But if you go to the very top there on the second floor, those are some business classrooms and foods classrooms. They elevate a little bit more to the medium to high risk. You come down the hallway, you can see there's one small office area that's more medium to high risk as well. And then you can see also some areas that just haven't been assessed yet. And we, you know, we believe it's the directive, unless the board says differently, that we should continue to assess. And this is today, right? You know, this is, and then also just for the public and for the board, this is a schematic this hasn't come with yet. You know, the detailed room-by-room analysis or an indication of what might be some repair recommendations. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move from it to the third floor, and this is where we've had the ceiling collapse. Excuse me there. So if you, interesting, if you look at the bright red, and, you know, interestingly enough, the only section that W G E, J E, excuse me, has found that has that bright red is up in that corner, that northwest corner. The room that actually had impact, strangely enough, there's a room that's in green, surrounded by red. And that might make you scratch your head a little bit. At some point, we don't know when, historically, it appears that that room had a repair. Sometime in the, in the history of that section. The room right below it, into your far left, is the room where you had the collapse. Below that, that little small spot is just a conference room. But then interestingly enough, the four classrooms below that of a similar vintage are low to medium risk. So right now, where you see that red, we are actually taking action right now because we know that action needs to be taken on those rooms. As you go down the hallway, because that's orange and a greater risk, those are biology classrooms, we would recommend that we also take those ceiling components out as well, just to fully understand it. Interesting enough, in the plan that you've been working with D L A, if the voters approved a renovation of this building, those classroom modeling, because some of our most dated rooms are biology classrooms. You can see the color scheme with the rest of the building, some solid grays, I mean, solid green, that's the port, that's the library. You can see a little bit more orange as you come down the hallway, right? And I think what you're seeing is, almost on every floor, you're seeing quite a bit of solid green or lime green. Low risk or low to medium risk. But on every floor, you're seeing some orange, and obviously on this floor, this is the only section that is red. And the reason why I wanna point that out to the board is what that is making us think, myself, Eric, the folks from W J E, Bill Thompson, is that this is going to take longer than we thought. Because just an inference, and you can clear it up, you know, if you feel differently, that those areas, especially obviously in the red, but those orange areas, and maybe even those medium to medium risk areas, you're going to want, as a board, to have repairs done. And if that is the discussion that we have in the next couple of weeks, and you authorize that, we have a whole process and procedure that we have to go through that with bidding and, you know, appropriate estimates and things like that, it is gonna take longer than we think. We believe a month to two months. And when anybody says a month to two months in, you know, any kind of construction project, I'm usually thinking three to four months. And that's not because people don't do good work, it's just because it takes time, this is taking time, right? It just doesn't ever go as fast as you want it to go. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
In the renovation plan for Central, we talked about remodeling those rooms.
Hmm.
So will we remodel them now or just take care of the issue?
Well, that's a, that's a really good question, because that's gonna depend on you. In that plan, for example, if we look at those biology classrooms right at the top, the plan would be, you know, to not only go in and assess all the things that we're talking about right now, repair all those, but really put state-of-the-art furniture, fixtures, and here's the difficulty. We would gain a lot of space up there when those legacy mechanicals, they take up a lot. For example, when you have radiator heat, you have a lot of pipes up there. You would actually gain space to have a much larger, proper biology lab when you gain that space. We're not in a position right now where we can remove those kind of mechanicals and do a complete H V A C system, right? So that creates a difficulty. I think what we've talked about is, you would do everything possible to prep those rooms, right? To bring them to a place that they're ready for students. And then, you know, at least you'd have half of that done, right? And then you do the proper renovation, if that's what the community, you know, would like to see. So, you know, I think there's good news here, and I think there's not so good news. I think the good news is, as you go through this, just using the colors that W J E used, you have more green and lime, you know, in places than you do red and orange. That's a really good thing. But I think as board members, when making a decision of how we can get students, you know, your priority on in-person learning, we have to make a best guess estimate that we don't know today, we don't know definitively today, how long it's gonna take. And if we operate on the premise that you are likely going to want to repair any high risk, medium to high risk or medium risk area, and just talking to H J E, I don't want to, you know, put words in their mouth, right? But just talking to them, I think, of W J E, excuse me, I think that, that is likely going to be their recommendation as well, right? They're gonna give you some things that they think that you, as a board, can repair. And that kinda leads us to conclude, you know, operate from a point of view that we just got a little bit longer to go timelines.
I do have a quick question.
Yeah.
So you're saying some of these classrooms, they've got three, four, and five layers of ceilings? So as far as assessing the top layer of ceiling, does that mean cutting out the entire ceiling? First layer, say if there's drywall, drywall, maybe a drop ceiling below?
Yeah, they're doing that currently.
Are they taking the entire ceiling out?
No, they're cutting holes to be a little, get their ladder up into the ceiling structure and to determine all of those ceilings that are in there.
Okay, that's a lengthy process right there.
Yeah.
Right, you get it, Mr. Borisman. What you just described, you know, is, you know, kind of exactly what you see. And one of the things I would really suggest to board members is, you know, I'd really appreciate just, you know, an opportunity right now to do the kind of walks that I've done. I just think even if you had twenty minutes and a cup of coffee, to really see, you know, the work that W J E is doing, contractors that we have in right away to handle the red area, I think it'd be very helpful for you, you know. I would've showed you some pictures, but I just, you know, I just couldn't, couldn't get up there with the lighting, I couldn't give you a sense of depth, right? Unless I got on a ladder myself and stuck my head up there, which didn't seem appropriate in the hard hat area, right? You know, I'm beyond my training, so to speak. So I wanna make sure that all of your questions about Central and its present condition, I feel like I'll be honest with you, when we received this report today, you know, and I saw it come in my email late this afternoon, I also wanna answer, you know, why are we showing it now? It came very late today. Also, the resolution I'm gonna share with you, a lot of this is being put together in, you know, twenty-four hours, so that we can act on behalf of our students. You know, I was worried about opening this up, when they told me that they were using a red, orange, lime green, green scheme. I thought, oh, gosh, what are we gonna see? And I actually was pleasantly surprised, not happy about the condition that we're in, that we saw, you know, so much, you know, you know, of lime green, green. I thought that was a good thing. But we do, as a board, I would suggest that we do have to come up with a strategy. You might not be able to decide that strategy tonight. You're operating in a vacuum. At this point, you don't know cost. You know, at this point, you don't know scope, what needs to be done. At this point, you don't know if you, just giving an example, those hallways, that corner classroom, if you commit, you don't know exactly how long that will take. So there just aren't the kind of details for you really to attack this problem, right? All of which, I think, leads into, you know, our second consideration of how can we get our students and teachers back together?
And before we move there too, are, so have we decided, is there any way to possibly get partial occupancy with this building? Or is this, we need to fix everything and then, and then we can start?
I do believe we could get a partial occupancy of the building. Once we get the final assessment from W J E, we'll analyze what their report comes back with us. But preliminary, it looks like we'll be able to occupy partial parts of the building prior to the whole thing being fixed. It's, again, these are isolated conditions in the classrooms. It's not like we're not talking, we're talking about ceilings in the building. So some of the ceilings, obviously, there is no risk, and so we, there's no reason we don't need to be in that, couldn't be in that room.
Right, and the difficulty is, you know, it'd be lovely if, you know, this map, you know, didn't correspond, you know, perfectly corresponded with student schedules. But if you take all the biology classes offline, that's the only, only, you know, science that freshmen take. If you take the foods rooms offline, there's, you know, a quarter of the kids are taking foods. I think the dilemma that we're gonna really have to encounter, that's a great, you know, astute observation, Mr. Borisman, that we might be able to do partial occupancy. Would we be able at, maybe at some point, to come back in, which is certainly what you'd have to do in a renovation, occupy part of the building, and match the equipment, the types of rooms with what students need? That would, that'll be the key, right? Can you get that right, that right match? And the hope is that you can get that sooner rather than later, right? We need right now, at the low end, about thirty-five classes, classrooms per period, up to about forty-seven. You know, that's the most that we operate in any given period. So that's the critical mass that we'd have to get to.
I'll say I wanna quantify the fact that, yeah, you could occupy that, that one classroom could be occupied, but we wanna make sure the path to get to that classroom, right, out of that classroom is safe as well. So there's some corridors that are of concern, so we'd have to make sure that those corridors are up to a low risk area.
Yeah, you might notice here on the first floor, that orange-ish is the only way around down there. So students would have to go up, over. So students would have to go up over, you know, those, we'd have to, those pathways, you know, become an issue. And then we have areas that we haven't assessed yet, right? Those are getting smaller and smaller every every day. Any any other questions, you know, I don't want to move away from this this diagram prematurely, if there, you know, gives us basic time for questions, thoughts, obviously for people in the audience to see this diagram, hopefully able to understand what the colors need in a crude way, it's not designed to be the definitive report, but a preliminary report to to help us make some decisions now. So.
Can I ask how many more days until the thing that says to be assessed is assessed?
We 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 don't know. We sure hope that, I mean, what's your best guess?
Probably at least two more days.
Right.
To get through the whole building to be assessed, it's a big building, there's a lot of ceilings, some of them are incredibly difficult to get to. So, yeah, I think two more days, probably we'd be able to get there.
And, you know, we've, you know, Friday always feels good, Monday to start something new, right? You know, but and and, you know, obviously, I think this is a situation where you, you know, you want to use the carpenter's adage, measure twice, cut once. And when we met, you know, with WJE, Bill Thompson, Eric and myself, they have asked about speed. And the speed that we've tried to set it at is the most thorough job possible, we're we're in it now. We should do a good job, let's do a good job, let's take advantage, we're learning the benefit, not the way you would want to learn it, but you're learning a lot that is a good, good feedback loop for you in terms of considering, in terms of the community considering a renovation of this of this building. You're learning a ton, not the way you want to learn it, right? With your permission, I just want to share with you the due diligence that we've done over the past four days to get ourselves back online. That's really led us to to our second agenda item, which is a resolution that that we are recommending. So what we did is we we divided into three teams, and we had one team just look at online learning. We're obviously in remote learning right now with our freshmen. One team looked at bringing everybody here into East Campus, what would that look like? The district has a history with that, about eighteen years ago. And then searching for an alternative location. I think it's fair enough to say, Friday, everyone was at their best on online learning, and already by today, I think there's a fatigue with it. The way that we would describe online learning, you know, as we jump into it, I think what we've learned is that there are quite a few challenges for students and staff and families. Talking with our staff today, very difficult to teach world language, very difficult to teach any of our applied classes, foods, Project Lead the Way, very, very, very difficult, a lot of a lot of blocks, you can't you can't sit with your teacher in a math class to work on a problem, makes it very difficult. I think we found it an ineffective long, long term for both academic and social growth. As you know, we we came right back, you know, in person as quickly as we can in August twenty twenty of the pandemic. We just didn't think that it was a good long-term solution. We can definitely go into that, if there's board members who feel it is a more multiple months solution, we could explore that, and kind of I've got lots of people who could give their 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 feedback on that. Really, everybody behind me was on that team, you know, from Mr. Dusterhoff, you know, all the way to Mr. Kandari, and I really have to put Mrs. Kishline on that team too, because those are, you know, particular working conditions for our teachers. But we we would not be in a position to to recommend that to you, we just don't think it's a good solution. Especially what we know now about the building, it's going to be longer than a week. East Campus, one of the things that's sometimes difficult to understand is the the nature of a modern comprehensive schedule. Sometimes there's a feeling that if you take every every room you had, every space, and you used it a hundred percent of the time, a hundred percent of the day, that you're you're able to do that. And that ideally would work if we were in Italy. Because in Italian schools where I've worked, students come to the classroom, and they don't leave their classroom, their teachers come. So so that would work. But that doesn't work in a modern comprehensive high school, where we have twenty-seven thousand variations of class pathways. If we were a class sitting here in first period, each of us is now going to go to a totally different location, most likely. And so those permutations really only give you about eighty-five percent use of the building, that's basically. So when we do that capacity study, our capacity here at East Campus is about three thousand. We would have to find a way to accommodate another nine hundred. How would we do that? Well, the only way to do that is really either through hybrid learning, and we know that through the pandemic. East Campus students come in, or Central Campus students stay home and do online learning. And then the next day you switch, Central students come in, East Campus stay home. The difficulty with that is, we do not believe, Dr. Christopher Ferro was talking with the state, that that would qualify as actual school days. So then, eighteen years ago, this this, we were doing split scheduling here. Very, very difficult, and much like hybrid, it would impact now everybody. Split scheduling, starting at six AM, going to eleven, and then a new group comes in, maybe starts at eleven-thirty, goes to four or five o'clock. Students to count in the state of Illinois have to have a five-hour school day for that to count as a proper school day for them. So to get every student, you'd have to create a schedule that creates ten hours. Some coming in early, some some staying late. That that does not seem to be a a long-term, sustainable solution. Especially what we feel, there's there's another solution available to us. So let me pause there, I want to make sure, you know, different colleagues, Dr. Greenian, Dr. Ozl, Dr. Christopher Ferro, to a certain extent, Josh Oster from Special Education, a little bit of Tony Kandari, some of our other assistant principals, department chairs certainly weighed in on what would it take to to do this? Is there anything I left out? Yeah, Dr. Christopher Ferro.
The only thing I would add, and our student board members had made this really clear about the importance of that community piece and seeing one another, and so that, you know, that becomes a problem if you're doing a hybrid schedule. But even if you're doing a split schedule, that complicates activities and athletics, right? How do we get students to tap into those those spaces that make them feel more included and belong to our school community?
Dr. McBride summarized it well, you know, as the principal of East Campus, we certainly just don't look at this as it's just a central problem. Like, this this is our school, so of course, we're trying to think of ways that we could have our freshmen here at East Campus. But the challenges with the numbers, of course, are are obvious. We just can't put between nine hundred and a thousand more students here. Try to think creatively, it wouldn't look the same, close to the comparison that Dr. McBride meant compared to Italy. If we if we could somehow house groups of students in our larger spaces of the building, auditorium, fieldhouse. But the more you talk about that, there are obvious challenges with that. Where are PE kids in the fieldhouse going to go, it's in November in the Midwest, we know that's rough. What would learning look like, even if we're able to fit larger groups of students departmentalized? The the challenges are obvious, so we certainly didn't want to just say we can't do that, we wanted to talk through for several days those kinds of possibilities. Then the capacity just becomes a problem.
And I would just add, online learning, as far as the state is concerned, for attendance purposes, right? The state is really directed, you all know this, that you're you're supposed to be in person. So we have a limited number of days that we can do that. Dr. McBride put up there, it can only be temporary.
Right, we we really only have for our entire student body to participate in online learning, we really only have five days. Right now, we have seventy-five percent of our students in in-person attendance, so we're treading water with our with our freshmen, okay?
Also, if you're not in a hybrid schedule, we are also looking at meshing two two separate school days, an eight-period day and a seven-period day.
Right, and that's a really, you know, in in a hybrid, that's why we we explored an east day, run that seven-period day schedule. A central day, run that eight-period, seven-day, eight-period. Or in a split schedule, run an eight-period schedule in five hours, run an eight-period schedule in five hours. And and I think, you know, with this option, you know, the most amount of email that I received today is not indifference to the situation that our freshmen are in, but a concern on behalf of sophomores, juniors, and seniors, is there another way that can almost replicate what we're doing now? Where our freshmen are at a different facility, operating their schedule, and operations at East continue on. I think many of our sophomore, junior, and senior families remember interruptions that they had, even in our own area, our seven feeder districts, all took very different approaches to learning. And so there's a memory there, there's almost a revictimization, you know? I don't like things that start with C, ceilings and COVID, I guess, you know, I would have to say. So we we can't recommend either one of these options. And.
Can I add something really quick? I just want to also make note that our Wilco students go to a different school after twelve, so if we were doing block schedule, that would affect our Wilco students, selfishly I had to add that.
Well, I don't think you're doing it selfishly, Ms. Del Ponte, because what you're recognizing is if you unzip the schedule here at East Campus, you're now, the impact is is far greater. You're impacting athletics, you're impacting activities, you're impacting Wilco, you're impacting, many students are are employed. They they leave at two forty-five, they go to a job, and if they say, I can't get to that job at three thirty, I'll have to get to that job at five thirty, they might not have that job, right? They might have other obligations, they might have, they might be the afternoon care in their home, right? So if you you impact everyone, then the impact is just so so much greater. And it's because of that 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 what we're we're really recommending, and I'm going to probably pivot to you with your permission, is we're we're recommending an alternative location. We had a team, you know, a number of people, Angela Adolf was on that team, Sue Clefman, who runs the CWC, Dr. Christopher Ferro was on that team, and what we did is we just kind of fanned out in our own community. We reached out to Megaplex, we reached out to Parkview Church, we reached out to Denalphos. Other churches were very kind to offer, and and any of you can chime in, but what we found is we we hit a brick wall with those because the most that any of those facilities could take would be about three hundred, four hundred students. Also, they didn't have the kind of classroom facilities that we would need, things like food service, adequate bathrooms, you know, many of those social halls are set up for a Sunday afternoon, but not for a five-day-a-week, you know, in terms of of facilities. What about some of our students with special needs, what about specialized equipment? We 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 fell short. And what would it mean for the community if we had students at three or four different sites? And what would it mean, would we be even be able to staff that? Could keep them here in our district, but it would pre- you know, present quite a bit of challenge. We reached out to JJC, we reached out to Lewis University, they're operating, you know, schools right now. They don't have sort of a dedicated wing, biology classrooms, dedicated equipment that we could just suddenly come in and take over. They similarly have some large spaces, but not large spaces that are created for the express purpose of high schooling, very specialized specialized needs. So I I just want to make sure, we're, you know, what I would propose here in the agenda, pivoting to to the resolution that I'd like you to consider, and and just get into an alternative location. I want to make sure that the board, you know, realizes you have access to the people that were doing the work, want to say to the community, we've done our due diligence on all three of these, and we've come here tonight just out of ideas, right? You know, but we we're actually believe this, if you have to do what we're doing right now, we think we're going to present to you a very doable, a very beneficial option that's going to preserve your priority on in-person learning and preserve operations here at East, and with, we hope, the least amount of inconvenience to students, staff, and family, an option that's that's livable and doable. But would you be ready to pivot away to that, or are there other questions, Mr. Rico?
Well, I know that this will probably go with the next topic, but for traveling teachers, if you were to do an alternate location, especially since our local options have kind of been exercised, I know you'll probably cover what that was looking for them, but that.
That would be a cha- a challenge that we'll have to take on, right? And we have different levers for that, so just I could see some people were leaning forward when you said traveling teachers. And just for the the audience, we we do have teachers who teach half a day, we have, I believe it's eighteen. Twenty-seven, I didn't see, Brian. We have twenty-seven teachers who, one way or the other, either teach half the day here and then go to Central, or teach half the day at Central or a period, and then come to East. For example, we have one German teacher, and she teaches at both buildings. So that would be in this solution, something that we would have to overcome, right? The impact on students isn't quite as large, you know, we're not in the hundreds or thousands, but it is an impactful thing for those students, right?
Can I take the opportunity to just have a little bit of a dialogue with my fellow board members? So, at least for me, I don't think online learning and sharing East Campus is our options at all. Do you guys agree that the first and second options are not something we should take, that we should look into alternative locations? Marty, do you think so?
Okay, in-person learning is the best thing, split student schedule is going to be very difficult.
I mean, we went through that online learning, you know, with when COVID hit, and yes, we we saw the challenges, you know, and and most of the students that we talked to and spoke said, you know, we want to be back in person.
I think we can all agree that online learning is not the option.
No.
No, online learning is like the least of these.
Michael wants to weigh in.
Oh, Michael.
Yeah, hi, hi, Mr. Schreiber.
Yeah, I'm a, you know, I'm looking for the alternate location. Where we can bring the students to.
And I and I also, you know, I had my two oldest sons that went through that split schedule, you know, when it was overcrowded here at East, and it was it was horrendous. It was horrendous, because, oh, yeah, that's right, Michael, you had your two sons too also, like, I mean, here, they were starting class at six-thirty in the morning, and they were coming home at one o'clock, and they'd go to sleep, and then they'd come back here for their activities or anything, so it was very strenuous, it was very.
It was.
And and, yeah, it was hard on the teachers, it was hard on the students, and I just didn't see, I didn't see that call.
I'm look, I'm looking at a alternative, you know, place we can go to.
Yes.
The doctor Brown talked about.
Yeah, my daughter, she went through that.
Also, yes, the split schedule.
Yeah, it was very stressful, and, you know, even though they got home early, she wound up being sleep deprived.
Yes.
Because it messed up her sleep pattern, and she had to get up so early to come here. You know, you know, we live across the bridge.
Oh, yeah, that's right, you went across the bridge, yes.
And then you had to deal with that early in the morning, because, especially in the snow.
Yes.
You know, so far, I wasn't quite out that sometime that early, so.
No, I mean, my son was on the swim team at that time, and he had to be here like at, what, thirty in the morning? Because they were swimming practice in the mornings, that was the only time they could do it, so it was it was very, it was very stressful and hard.
And like you say, because my daughter was softball and bowling, you know, to come back, you know, was issues, so.
Yeah, so I assume like if you go to an alternate location, there'd be like a buffer period where we have to get set up at the alternate location, get it ready for students to arrive, what would we do during that buffer period?
Yeah, we'll, you know, we'll we'll jump into that, let me hold on to that, I'm just, you know, you know, you guys direct me when you're ready to go to that. You know, then I'll, we'll we'll jump to the next next segment.
I think we're.
What is the alternate?
I think we're there.
I think we, I think, yeah, we all agree that the alternate location is the best.
Yeah, and I just think you want to have a due diligence, right? So, the alternative location, Linkin Way North High School. You know, we've been really, really blessed. We're, we have an athletic conference, one of the things I enjoy about the Southwest Suburban Conference, it's been a long, long time. We treat each other like we're neighbors. You know, you would hope if your house was on fire and you ran over to your neighbor's door and rang the doorbell to get sheltered, that they would would say, come on in, well, you know, let's help help you out, and I think the Linkin Way community is is absolutely doing this. Want to just give you a little bit of a timeline, a few things up there. This would be a temporary alternative location. The obvious benefit is it has every amenity, it's built for high schoolers. It it does need some support to kind of get it get it ramped back up. But it would allow us to operate the situation we have with Central and with East, except where we would, you know, have a greater distance, a twenty-five to thirty-minute distance away, depending on how I-80 is behaving. It's in excellent condition, has every single necessary facility. I'm a little bit worried that our freshmen won't come back. And you know what? Every single year, Dr. Tingley, my colleague in Lincoln Way, wisely continued to have the ROE do its regular building and respect. So just to kinda give you a timeline of how this went. We had an initial conversation on Friday. I asked Mr. Thompson to reach out to District 210. Saturday morning, Mr. Thompson and I spent a very long morning at Central along with Mr. Sickbert and with WJGE. And really, I think we all walked out of that meeting, got in our cars, got on our cellphones and said to each other, "Are you thinking what I'm thinking, that this is going to be longer than we thought?" And that really has played itself out. So, I reached out to my colleague, Dr. Tingley. We had a team to visit Lincoln Way North yesterday morning. That was Mr. Thompson, myself, Mr. Dusterhoff, Mr. Osbald, Dr. Green, who couldn't join us tonight. And I think that's the team. We did a, you know, and I'm really grateful, you know, the superintendent of Lincoln Way, their director of facilities, their chief school business official, they have things they have to do other than spending two hours with us. And also, I really respect, you know, the importance for us, if we can move through this, of being good partners with Lincoln Way. This brings up a frustration for them, a disappointment. If you go out to Lincoln Way North, you see that beautiful high school facility, and know that it's not being used. That's hard on a school person.
How old is that building?
It is opened in two thousand eight, so...
And it only operated for five years?
Closed in two thousand eighteen.
It only operated for five years?
Eight years.
Yeah.
So, what, just a little bit over a decade? Fifteen years? So we met yesterday, tonight, we sat, yesterday, we sat in an emergency board meeting. We were pleased with what we saw. We felt like we could move forward. We, you know, were able to, you know, one of the great things about our district is, you know, we have a union president, Katie Kishline, who's over there, that we can reach out to in the weekend and talk to her and say, you know, we desire to move quickly. We obviously have a collective bargaining agreement. But do you think this is something we could work on? And her partnership and voice for our staff is invaluable. Yesterday, we set some preliminary plans in motion. I asked our director of transport to begin drawing up a transport plan, to begin running buses. So as we visited Lockport Township District 205, buses began to roll up. You know, we have a transportation plan that we would share with you this evening. We began looking at technology, we began looking at food service, we began looking at furniture and fixtures. There really are no desks. They've all, you know, been taken out. Some of the food service equipment is not going to help us. It's either not there or not palpable to come up with a plan. Yesterday, as you know, as board members, I briefed you on what I learned, almost everything up until that point. And then tonight, you know, what I plan to put in front of you after we just present this option, is a resolution authorizing us to move forward. You know, as I shared, you'll have to make a governance decision. You could resolve tonight to move forward, or you could wait to, until all the agreements are in place, to move forward. You'll have to, you know, you'll see the resolution in a moment, and you know what it says. We received that just today from our attorneys, Robin Schwartz. So with your permission, I just wanna turn into the plan, as best as we have it. We do not have an intergovernmental agreement for you tonight, just not enough time. We do not have a rental agreement or cost. We don't have estimates on fuel. We do have estimates on drivers. Once again, our drivers have come through. We will find out the cost of having a company called Service Pro just clean Lincoln Way North. Some of the initial setups will know that, and we don't know how much of this would be covered under an insurance claim either. So to a certain extent, this is exactly where your cash reserves, having six to twelve months of cash on hand. This is it. And you could certainly ask Stephanie Coy how, you know, she would work that. So, operational and budget issues, you know, and if you're more comfortable up here, Mrs. Coy, you know, feel free, or if you're comfortable where you're at, and Mr. Dusterhoff as well, you know, it might be helpful if you just stand up so folks can hear your voice if you're speaking, but, you know, we had to think about busing. We had to think about classrooms, technology, budget and costs, insurance, food service. We do have a transportation plan, which I'll go ahead and describe to you. It would require a modification of our transportation plan. Also, to occupy this school, we would need to negotiate rental agreements and intergovernmental agreements. The resolution asks you to do is to allow me and our staff as agents to negotiate that, come to terms on that, so that we can move quickly to place students in that building. In terms of transportation, we really thought about what would be the most helpful transportation plan. Right now, our bus driver availability, we don't have a lot of availability after four o'clock with our bus drivers. Those that remain oftentimes do athletic runs. So what we do is really every single day, every bus goes, starts out by going to Central, or every bus goes to East. And then many times, those buses then go on, bringing kids over to East to finish the morning run, bringing kids over to Central to finish the morning run. We sometimes have kids who are going to Central pick the bus up here, because its last leg is gonna be at Central. Standing on the corner this morning, while I was walking around Central, were a whole bunch of East students, walkers. "We're gonna pick up the bus at Central. Come on over here, you're upperclassmen." So we thought, "How can we replicate that?" What we would do is have every single bus in the district would come here. Students would stay on some buses, disembark, school would begin here at East Campus, and then we would send twenty-two shuttles to Lincoln Way North for a little bit later start in the morning. Then we would reverse that in the afternoon. Those twenty-two shuttles would return. Some students stay on those buses, some students get on new buses, and then those buses go back out to places in the community. You know, of course, parents would always have the option, if they wanna drive their children to school, you know, we would have a parent drop-off. Some parents might say, "I'm not gonna do that." We could expect more ridership. We're ready for that. We have the capacity for that. But what we think is fair about that, not only does that give us kind of a locus of control, but there isn't anybody who's riding, in essence, a different bus route other than the shuttle to Lincoln Way North, which would take about twenty-five minutes to a half an hour, depending on what's going on, road conditions, weather, things like that.
And that still ensures that the students that are coming back from North make it back for any sort of athletic or extracurricular...
Exactly, Dr. Rogers. So they would come back here, and they'd be able to participate in winter sports.
That also leaves our drivers that do the activity runs in the evening, the availability to do that, those activity runs. It allows us to continue doing many of the other runs that we do as well. There's still some things we'll have to look at to make sure we can do Wilco runs in the morning, right? Like maybe drivers that are doing the twenty-two shuttles, aren't those people that normally do the Wilco runs in the middle of the day, right? But yeah, there's lots of benefits as far as the least amount of disruption, right? So our families are concerned, their students will still return, they'll still get on the bus where they always get on the bus, or walk to either East or Central like they always walk to East or Central.
And nothing essentially would change about their pickup times from their homes?
Nope.
Right.
Not upon initial stops.
And how about their academics? Is the day shortened?
We would add for Central. That is a downside. You're exactly right, Dr. Shimon Rogers. We would have to shorten that day, so in order to begin at, let's say, eight fifteen, eight thirty, and then get students back here, we'd have to dismiss at one forty-five, maybe two, but that'd be cutting it very close. So we'd be at a five-and-a-half-hour, six-hour day. That is a shorter day. That is, there's just no way to, that's an instructional loss, you know, that's rough with ninth graders. I think that's a real downside. We are a one-to-one school. I don't know, Mr. Dusterhoff, if you wanna talk on this operational issues, just about technology.
So, good evening. The, right, the fourth utility in the intermodern school is the internet, and whether or not you have a connection. They do have maintained a small connection there, and it is capable of being turned up to capacity that will meet our needs. So that was the number one thing that we worried about, and we're certain that we can get that up and running to adequate speed. The second piece would be wireless connectivity in the building, so that students' Chromebooks, teachers' laptops, all connect and work. We would need to pick up Central Campus, much of our technology that's there, and move it into that building. Now, all of the wiring is in place, all of the access points that get hung from the ceiling, that wiring is usually a hassle. It's all still in place. We can bring our equipment over, plug it in. Because it's attached to our equipment, there's no configuration, there's no, or it will feel and look like the network at, because it is the network. We're picking it up and we're moving it. We believe physically that can all be done quickly. And then, from a network standpoint, the other pieces, security, firewall, all those sorts of pieces. And what would occur is that at North Campus, we would start, we would build what's called a tunnel. And our data would go out through Lincoln Way's network, through the internet, and back to here. And it is secure, encrypted. We call it a tunnel, and it's exactly that. It's tunneled straight through. Nobody can see it, nobody can access it, and it moves back and forth. It's unencrypted here, dealt with, and then moved on, actually probably back out to the internet. So a student surfing, uh, surfing, sorry, going to Google Classroom would start at Lincoln Way, go out to the internet, hit here, and then go back out to the internet to actually access something like Google Classroom. Questions about network? Security, okay. Other quickly things, teachers all have laptops, so that's very good. Uh, sorry, that eases the transition. Students are on Chromebooks. That eases the transition. We'll have to do some things with the office staff, because they're on typically desktops and things, but we do have some laptops, carts that we use for students that we may be able to reposition and may pick up some desktops and move them as well. That's not quite all the way through. And then finally, students, because they're on Chromebooks, it will feel and be exactly the same. For them, my staff will be able to, you know, the staff that works there will come there, will support and provide cleaners and repairs and all those sorts of things that we normally do at Central. All right?
One, oh yeah, Mr. Patel.
So, I know projectors are like a big part of learning. Do you guys still have the projectors, even though you replaced...
We don't. We did replace all of the projectors in this building and at Central. And fortunately, I was at Lincoln Way this morning, and they asked about AV, and I said, "That's not an answer I have." They said, "Oh, we just replaced all of ours over the summer. We had not disposed of our old ones. They're four or five years old, but they are available." And so, in, to Dr. McBride's point about people pitching in, I've asked some other schools for some assistance on a thing or two here, and everybody has said, "What do you need?" So things like that will, people will pitch in and will be able to support.
Just looking for questions. Mrs. Coy, do you wanna talk a little bit about your conversations with your counterpart? You know, just in terms of what you do about intergovernmental agreement, what you know about cost, food service plan? You know, just very tentative.
So food service is one of the questions that probably will come up with a lot of families. That is one area that maybe like the learning where there is a detriment, right? Inspecting or taking a look at some of the facilities at Lincoln Way, one of the areas that has not been as well-kept and some pieces of equipment have been moved out is the kitchen areas, which means we probably won't be able to prep meals there, so we won't have a full food service. We'll have some kind of food service. We just, it will probably be more like a satellite location, meals being brought in. We don't know exactly what that'll look like yet, but we'll be working on that. There will be food provided, especially for students that are on our free and reduced program, but we don't know what that'll look like yet. We may not be able to do full food service out of their kitchen. We probably won't be able to. As far as intergovernmental agreement, so in order for us to do this, to work with Lincoln Way, we need an agreement with the other governmental body, the other public school district, right? So I've been in contact with our attorneys. I've also been in contact with Mr. Dubak, the CSBO, the business manager, my counterpart over at Lincoln Way 210. And we've started conversations about that, like what will that look like? We're gonna have the attorney kind of draft something, as far as what will they charge us for rent? Will it be, you know, cost splits, or will they determine this is what rent is, and then they will pay all utilities? That's a question, right? Like, we're gonna work through those pieces. Who will be, you know, who will be maintaining some things, right? Because like Mr. Dusterhoff said, tech people that were at Central, that were normally located at Central, are gonna go over to Lincoln Way North. So will our custodial maintenance staff, right? So those individuals would be supporting over there. But Lincoln Way North also has an individual that is overseeing that building, because parts of that building are being used by the park district right now, parking district right now. So there, all those pieces have to be worked into the intergovernmental agreement, right? Like, who's, what part of the building are we gonna occupy? What part of the building is being used by someone else? How will that be divided? Because we have schoolchildren in the building, right? What will be the costs? Who will be responsible for certain things? All that'll have to be worked out. As far as comments everyone has said about being neighborly, like, those are things we'll work out. They're not concerns. They're just things we need to talk about, what works best for both parties. Are there questions about those pieces? It sounds like it's a big, a big thing, but it, honestly, the biggest piece is moving the students and getting them back up and running. The, these pieces are kind of almost aftermath.
What about liability coverage, insurance?
So we would still be covered over there, because our insurance would cover, that would be a rental for us, right? That's a rental space that we'd be occupying. So we would have to provide, I would request from our insurance, a certificate of insurance to provide Lincoln Way, so that we would be covered.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
What about security?
Security, we'd have to reestablish all of our security protocols. We do know that the park district section is closed off, can be closed off. We'd have to reestablish our Raptor protocols. But since it's a already functional building, it has a secure vestibule. We obviously would lock all the perimeter doors, and we would just have to develop, you know, an understanding of everyone there. It already has plans for sort of like security areas for tornado, fire, you know, evacuation routes, you know, safety and security drills, you know, in terms of intruder. So we'd have to reestablish all those and help people understand.
We have an agreement with Lockport.
We do.
Well, having the security.
Right. I thought you, I thought you were talking about building security, not school resource officer. Our school resource officer would be there, but his role would be similar to like when he is there and we go to prom in Chicago. He does not have powers to arrest, does not have those kind of powers. So we're working with Will County Sheriff that's unincorporated in Frankfurt. So we're trying to establish what the working relationship would be with law enforcement in that area.
You're saying we're getting the Will County Sheriff Department to send a officer to...
No, no. We have to liaison. If we have a Lockport police officer who is operating inside that campus, which he would be, they have to have an agreement with Will County Sheriff, because they are, they have jurisdiction there.
Oh, so Will County is giving them jurisdiction there?
No, they have jurisdiction. They're not giving our police officer jurisdiction. They're the control authority that would be making decisions on, you know, if we had a security issue, Will County Sheriff would much like when Cam Camerouskis, if we have a security issue, calls, you know, his headquarters. He'd be calling Will County Sheriff. They'd be working with their headquarters, making decisions about what's happening at the building, all the way from the individual student level, all the way up to, you know, if we had an intruder or something like that. Similarly, with fire, we would have to alert Frankfurt Incorporated Fire as well. Yeah, Ms. Del Ponte?
Is Lincoln Way North ADA compliant, and will the CCC attend school?
Yeah, it is, it is fully ADA compliant, you know. Being a building, it was built in two thousand eight, it had to be, so its accessibility is, you know, what this facility is, what, you know, you won't... what this facility is, what, you know, most facilities are.
And then CCC?
And then, Mr. Oster is here, he's Department Chair Special Ed, kinda wanna talk about the CCC and maybe the Academy as well, Mr. Oster?
Sure. So we, on Thursday, after I was done helping shuttle some kids over here to, back to East, including the CCC and the Academy, we started looking for places in, in the community to house those two programs. They, we were remote on Friday for both programs and then we spent all day Friday, and then a little bit Monday morning, getting the Lockport Township Building just down the street on Farrell Road ready, where the CCC and the Academy are. We worked through, they did not require us to do an intergovernmental agreement and did not want to charge us rent either, which was great for them. So currently, those two programs are there. The CCC would likely stay there, because most of their, they're not in any building very often, they're, it's a community-based program, they're, right? So if they were 30 minutes out, it's just more difficult for them to get to the job sites they use and the community sites they use. There is discussion about maybe moving the Academy back there as, as the Township Building is, is great for a temporary solution, but they don't have classrooms necessarily, just like we were talking about with all these other spaces. So it works, but if we're there a little bit longer term, they may need, you know, actual classroom spaces.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Patel. Oh, sorry, I'm Dr. Shaw.
Sorry.
Yeah, you guys decide.
So you said that the Park District uses part of the weight room space, so what is the size comparison from Central to Lincoln Way North that the students will use?
This is a much, much larger building. I mean, this building has, what you're, what you're looking at here is actually the field house and the gym. We would have access to the gym, it's enormous. The field house, the weight room, we would not, and a cardio room, we wouldn't have access to, that's the Park District. The building, you can't see it from this picture, but there are two long wings that reach out behind, you know, from the building. We might, you know, Dr. Osball knows, we might only use one of those wings, there's that many classrooms. There's ample office space, there's school nurse space, there's school resource officer space, there's cafeteria, there's an auditorium, there's almost like a student center, you know, so it's, it really has everything that a modern high school would have.
Yeah, Dr. Shaw.
So to give you a little bit of a perspective, it would kind of be like closing off the doors right here, and then that whole side of the building would be available to the freshmen. It's more room than what they need. I did have the ability to go walk through the building today with Dr. Tangley. I was amazed at how well-kept it's been for a building that opened in the fall of '08, closed in June of '16. And it's just been periodically used throughout that time. I think it would be a great space for our kids, just as an alternate location. I do know that ROE was last there in April, and again, ample space for everybody. I think we counted 18 offices that could be used, it's probably more than what Central has right now, just as far as deans and counselors and administrative staff, things like that, so it's a, it's a good option.
And I'm sure, I think I asked you this question before, Dr. Shaw, but as, you know, somebody who taught, became a dean administrator in Lincoln Way, is currently an administrator at Lincoln Way East, you probably had a chance to see that building in action, students moving through it, following through it, so you have that, that perspective to share with your colleagues as well.
One question I did have regarding insurance, when it comes to setting up an alternate site for, you know, we're obviously, we can't inhabit that building, does our insurance have a provision for setting up an alternate work site in the way shape or form that they might provide us some finances for?
So, I have, I don't know what's going to be approved for, are you asking me about the cost? Would they pay for said location or is that what?
I'm not saying that they're gonna pay for the entire location, but would there be anything in our insurance provisions that would probably do something like that?
Well, we would be covered, like, so anything that happens over there, it's just a rental place.
Well, I mean the setup, like, since we did have to move from one location to another, is there any cost reimbursement through our insurance?
I don't know what's gonna be covered, I can't, I can't say that, okay? So what I know is, the day that we were aware of the incident, of the ceiling collapse, I notified our insurance and filed the claim. So there is a claim open. They are waiting for the report, the full report, I think to determine the cause. So then, what happens is, so we're part of a self-insured cooperative, called CLIC, and so that self-insured cooperative is run by a board, and that board is fellow business managers that I know, right? Like, they're elected by the, by the rest of the members of CLIC, and they're a board that makes decisions just like you all, okay? So every claim that's brought for self-insured purposes to them, they have to weigh, figure it all out and determine what they are, whether they're gonna approve it, what they're gonna approve for. I will file every piece of expense that we have incurred, and then they will determine what will be covered. I can't answer what they'll say yea or nay about, I also don't even know how they'll, you know, rule on cause and whether it fits, you know, in an approvable claim status, I don't know any of that at this point. Yeah, yeah, I do know I filed it and I will track and resubmit everything, including, you know, moving expenses and stuff.
Yeah, Ms. Rico.
I was wondering, because I know you said in order to be considered a full school day, it's five hours, and on short and Wednesdays, if you're already shortening the schedules to accommodate transportation, would those be like staggered for freshmen?
We are gonna have to figure out Wednesdays, you know, that is one, you know, that's just a little, little, little something in our schedule that we're gonna have to sort through. So we're not quite there yet, but we, you know, hopefully if there's, you know, resolution, if the board's comfortable with this, well, that'll be something we'll have to figure out. All right? Kind of moving forward, I'm, just, I think it's important to also talk about working conditions. We do, like I mentioned, we do have a collective bargaining agreement, and, you know, Mr. Kundari, if you wanna kind of talk and, you know, Mrs. Kishline, feel free to jump in as you wish, right? But the process we would use is the memorandum of understanding process, and what that is, is where Mr. Kundari, Mrs. Kishline meet, agree on certain aspects of a modification in the collective bargaining agreement, and then they are signatories to that, on your behalf as the board, Mrs. Kishline on the behalf of the union membership. So that is the process that we would use. We also have some important staff priorities. We want to continue professional development for the staff, the central staff, learning community time, communications with our central staff members, you know, let's not forget about them out there at, at North. So some important staff priorities, also, important priority is to, to give them enough time to set up well, so that they make a good reopening start. Mr. Kundari, anything to, to share with just, you know, the conversations that two of you've had?
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Yes, since, since the incident on Thursday, Mrs. Kishline and I have been calling each other, meeting together on a daily basis, even over the weekend, just to make sure that any plan that we, we put forth is fair, is covered under the collective bargaining agreements, both for the teachers and for the educational support personnel as well, that second agreement covers folks like the paraprofessionals, the office professionals and secretaries, the facility staff with the custodial team and the maintenance staff and the ground staff. So we've, we've been discussing time of day starts, traveling from building to building, additional supervisions, whether it's in the morning when staff arrives or in the afternoon when, or when students arrive, and in the afternoon when students leave, you know, what are some, some extra? What are some extra lunchroom duties, you know, that, that may happen? So all these things are covered under the collective bargaining agreement, and Mrs. Kishline and I have been trying to work those out, and once we get, you know, a plan even more in place, we want to make sure that, you know, everyone's treated fairly and personally. During COVID times, you know, we, the board directed us to make sure we looked at our individual staff members, to make sure we were making decisions to help our staff members through that, that critical time, and we'll be doing the same thing, you know, for this as far as traveling and childcare issues and all those different things that may happen. Does Kishline, anything else that?
No. Depending on student contact, you've thought about everything, so I, I feel that we're in a good place, I mean, the best that we can with the situation at hand.
And when the incident started, Mrs. Kishline, the first thing she says, what said was, what can we do to help? So, you know, we are, we are really blessed to have such a great working relationship to make sure we're doing what's best for the students, the staff, and the community. Any questions from board?
Well, I got one for Dr. Shaw. How long do you anticipate we'll be doing this, or what's?
Well, you know, when, when Eric Sickbird said, you know, it's gonna be about a month, and, and actually, I think you, you have a lot to do with the speed, right? Because the choices that you make in terms of repair, obviously you determine the time, right? You know, if you say a month, now we're already up to winter break, now we're talking, I think at a minimum, you know, if we make this move, you know, we might be coming back and, you know, Mr. Borsman's really good point of, hey, can we occupy Central? But one of the things we learned in the pandemic is pivot, pivot, pivot really makes people nauseous, it's just a lot of seasickness. I, I would recommend you stabilize the situation, you get into a rhythm at Lincoln Way North, that's as important as the readiness of Central when, when to return, you know, to see an inflection point that feels right, you know, to come on back. But just, you know, the nature of these kind of things, and where I think you're at in terms of wanting to, to repair even those low-risk, medium to high-risk, you know, I think you're looking at the beginning of January, maybe the end of January, right?
Sorry. I might also say that that timeline also depends on, so, as a school district, we are governed by bid law for some of these projects, right? And because of that bidding law, there are certain exceptions, and emergencies are an exception. However, what defines that emergency? If, if we get settled and have students set up somewhere else, which of course is our ideal, some of the pieces may not qualify under bid law as a, as a emergency anymore, right? Depending on the extent of what is required to be done, what we're, what we're wanting to be done, like Dr. McBride said, it depends on what the board wants to do. But that may extend timeline from the perspective of bidding takes time, right? Like, we have to put bid specs together, we have to have time for the contractors to bid on it, we have to open them, we have to approve them, then we have to get the work started. So depending on whether things qualify as emergency status, God bless you, because we cannot do, we can't skirt the bid law, right? It's a law. So that may play into timeline as well, I guess, is what I wanted to clarify.
Just a couple other slides, and then we'll kind of get to the resolution. Dr. Christopher is at the ready, just ISBE, you know, ISBE is still a governing, really appreciative, one of our state representatives, Dagmar Abalar, reached out to ISBE, ISBE got right in touch with me, that's nice to have your legislator working that, to see how they could help. We have to be conscious of, we have to ensure that, that attendance counts. And one of the things I don't think we want to do is put our freshmen in a situation where they're going, you know, deep into, into the summer. We have to clarify, ISBE, sometimes they think two buildings, two schools, we're one school. So we have to make sure that they're thinking of it that, us, us that way, that what Central does, we do what we do Central does, right?
Wait, I'm sorry, two buildings, one school?
We're one school.
Yeah.
So we're not a separate, Central isn't a separate school, a separate entity, they're just a separate campus that's part of the school.
There's problems with people having separate campuses?
If, if ISBE thinks that we're two schools, you know, they would say, well, this school has to make up these online learning days. Our argument is we're one school and 75% of our students are, are, you know, learning. So if you go to the, the state, in the state you look for us listed, the Illinois State School Report Card, you only see one report card, not two for the district.
I think Chelsea had it.
Yeah, Chelsea, Ms. Ose.
I know we're allowed it by days for our e-learning days, do you think that we would be, we would have enough time to transfer all of our materials from North to, from Central to North in that time?
Well, right now, we're using, we would have, with our freshmen using online learning to buy that time. But those five days are emergency days for everyone at our school. So that's if you operationalize those and you say operations are shut down for the whole district. They're mainly in place for weather, right? Or another emergency that might require. So we have to think about attendance, and then we also have to think about our, our partners. Will County ROE, very important player, Friday, they'll have their building inspector at, at North if we move forward with this, to certify that that building can open. They're also the agency that would open, say that Central can be reoccupied, so we have to partner with them. Been in contact with, with all three of our local mayors, they've been great, they've invited me to come and brief their village and city boards, but I didn't want to brief their village and city boards before I briefed you, so that seemed a bit premature, but a generous offer of time. And then state representatives have, have reached out and said, and how can we support? Anything, Dr. Christopher, that you didn't mention earlier, just about any of these ISBE decisions?
I would just say, you know, we're working with Will County ROE, they're helpful with us trying to navigate this attendance issue, and they've been in good contact with the state, as has Dr. McBride.
Communications, and I realize I skipped a slide that I have to go back to, for Dr. Osball and Dr. Greenin, but we'll, we'll land here. So communications, you know, obviously, Mrs. Castillo is our Director of Public Relations, and some, some critical issues. We'll continue to provide students, staff, parents timely, up-to-date information, you know, as we know it, they'll know it, to ensure a smooth, strong experience, you know, and an effective conclusion whenever that happens at Lincoln Way North. And then transpor, transparency. We've set up a separate, dedicated webpage just for Central updates, you know, documents that we receive, we're gonna publish, you know, we're gonna put online, and, you know, historic documents that help people frame and understand, that helps people, you know, understand the situation. Use of video, eventually, we're probably going to be doing tours, both of Central and of Lincoln Way North, for parents who want to find out, where are my, you know, freshman students? So all of those kind of communication vehicles that we use. Anything to add, Mrs. Castillo?
If you haven't downloaded our app yet, now is the time, so you can be able to receive that important information, and as Dr. McBride did share, as soon as there's some communication to share with our parents, guardians, and community, I will be sure to be able to share that with everybody as well.
Learning and teaching, very important. Dr. Osball and Dr. Greenin, Dr. Osball is standing in place of Dr. Green this evening, been, been working very hard on just schedules, classroom equipments, staff support, reopening. You know, eventually, we'll share with the board, plans we have to ensure that all students follow their current schedule. This is a place where all students can follow all eight, eight classes that they're in, and in facilities where they, they can do those eight classes, Project Leadaway, Foods, under a slightly modified, as I think it might have been Ms. Rico picked up. All special education services would continue as well, all ELL services would continue as well, guidance services, social work services, psychology services would continue. Then support and equipment for reopening. Dr. Greenin, Dr. Osball, do you want to, you know, anything you can share, what you've learned, just about teaching and learning, what you're planning, what you're thinking?
I mean, I would say that there's definitely gonna have to be some work in making sure that we connect the teachers with the equipment and the supplies that they need, but to begin with, like, the teachers have been great at communicating and working through the challenges, so I just, I, I'm really not that concerned about this, because we're, the staff that we have is already ready to go and ready to do what we need to do to help support the students.
As you mentioned, Dr. McBride, we'll obviously need to shorten the schedule a little bit, so that, that certainly is something that, that is on all of our minds. With that being said, we want our freshmen in the building to learn. So if we have to take off 10 or so minutes from periods, obviously, that's not ideal, but our kids are in the building with our teachers, with our staff, and that's, that is the most important thing to us. So we will continue to work through every issue that we're thinking of and other things that, that will come up, but I'm very proud of the work of our team, and I know that we will continue to do what's in the best interest of the students.
But I'm very proud of the work of our team, and I know that we will continue to do what's in the best interest of the students.
Would we cut compass time from Central?
We talked about what a model would look like with and without compass. We think that even if we have to shorten compass, that's gonna be important time. Just to have some additional time. A final decision hasn't been made, but we're, we're looking at multiple models.
I would just add that when we toured other sites, not this site, not Lincoln Way, there would have been a new challenge thrown to teachers. How do I instruct in these really large spaces where kids can't move between classes like? So that would have been a new instructional curve ball they would have to figure out, just like they had to figure that out with online learning. This presents the solution where teachers can provide the most engaging instructional activities that they do routinely here on this campus in Lincoln Way at Central Campus.
And Mr. Patel, I just want to check in. Mr. Travis, do you have any questions that we might not have acknowledged? Are you still with us, Mr. Travis? A little bit of, a little bit of delay. Mr. Travis, just checking in on you. We hadn't heard from you for a bit.
I hope our connection at North is better than our connection here.
Well, it might be cell phone.
Well, my, my, I'm, it wasn't working. I'm not giving it now.
So you're doing okay, Mr. Travis? I don't want to forget about you or not answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
If I have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Patel.
So I know we had extracurricular activities at Central.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would any extracurricular activities take place at Lincoln Way North?
We're, we're not planning that right now. So that is, that is not our plan right this second. Do, do them all here, basically.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
And/or a suggestion. I think this is a great solution for a very unfortunate situation. We do have the potential to be here for a very long time. I'm just kind of looking out for the students here, if it's possible to, you mentioned twenty-two shuttles, to get them bused directly from their house to Lincoln Ways North?
It, it is not. And the reason why it's not is because we just don't have the drivers or the enough buses to do it. You know, so what we're doing is we're modeling the same plan that we currently operate. Also, what it would create is we'd create situations. So one, we just don't have the assets to do it. And then two, it would create a situation where students, for example, from Crest Hill would have a significantly longer commute, kind of cutting through into the zone of I-80 where it's, you know, during construction versus, you know, somebody who's maybe on the far east side of Homer Glen, who's much closer. So, but the main reason is we, we just don't have the drivers and the assets to do it. So.
I don't, I don't know the ins and outs, just the drivers that do go to Central, maybe they could be.
Some of the drivers, various students, for Borsman. We are going to have some routes that just, just go from Central. Because we've recognized that as well, that we're probably gonna be able to do that. But to, to have all, some shuttles that will just leave from that spot. But to pick up every freshman from their house, we, we just don't have enough buses.
Or, or a bus stop.
Right. And, and after school, that becomes a, a real issue too, because we need those buses back here to dismiss. So if they're doing routes in the community, then they're offline, they're not available.
You did mention pivot, pivot causes seasickness, so. I was just trying to avoid the seasickness.
Yeah, right.
So, so to, to add on to what Dr. McBride says is all of our, all of our buses right now go to both buildings every day. So every bus, there are no buses that are just freshmen. All of our buses have commingled students currently. So there's, there's no, due to the size of our district and the, the way the, you know, some of the furthest out places we have to go to pick up students, there's really no way for us to do, have a whole set of buses for freshmen and a whole set of buses for East. Everybody does both. They stop at both places. Like Dr. McBride said, sometimes they shuttle back and forth because we have walkers that walk to East that go to Central, and walkers that go to Central, that walk to Central, that come over to East on a shuttle. And so because of that, everybody goes back and forth. The, the other concern is the length of time, because of the size of the district, of each route. If we were to try to use a double routes, that would impact like length of day. So we've thought about those things, but there's all these complications as we, we keep running into when we try to consider some of those things.
Right. And the point you made earlier, Mrs. Crowe, is that literally in the morning, everybody goes to the same stop. Everybody gets the same time that they have all year. And then the same in the evening. And if they take the bus home, under this model, everybody goes to the same stop, it drops them off at the same time. So the beginning and the end of the day, no, no shortage for anybody right now. Freshmen, sophomore, junior, senior, if they're busking. So that has a sort of a built-in familiarity to it. You know, other questions? Here would be the next steps. There are lots of next steps. I'm gonna pass around in just a moment, a resolution. This is where you have to decide, you know, how, how quickly you want to move or how slow you want to move. So we got a lot of next steps. You can authorize us as administrative team to take these next steps on your behalf, or you can take these next steps. But we have to negotiate an intergovernmental agreement, negotiate a rental agreement. We have to establish the readiness of Lincoln Way North. We have to communication staff, parent, students, establish a timeline for occupancy. Work with Will County ROE to approve that occupancy. Establish safety and security protocols that we would have, you know, in any proper school building. We have to prepare a food service plan, that would be modification of our contract with Quest. Move staff members in, prepare, give them enough time to, to make a good start. And then we almost have to prepare a, a climate and culture reopening of, of the building, just sort of a re-establishment. And then what that means. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pivot away from this, and if I run out of copies, I think I have enough copies. And if I run out, just holler, I have a copy. This is a copy, you can do this by resolution. You know, and I, I think just the ending slide is this is, this is what we want to see ultimately. You know, we, we just want to do what's best for students, get them back into a stable situation. And, you know, learning in person, learning with their classmates, and learning with their teachers. So let me navigate away from this just for a moment. And show you, you, you know, the action item today, tonight would be to approve this resolution, but that again, depends on, on how quickly you would, you would hope to move. So this, this would be the, the resolution. And what it does is it establishes your situation and establishes next step. So whereas Board of Education Lockport Township, Will County has determined that the recent ceiling collapse, that the building, Central Building will remain unavailable for a period of time, yet to be determined. Whereas the Board has directed the district administration to make a recommendation to allow Central Campus students to return to in-person learning. You know, this verifies, this was your directive, that this is your priority. As quickly as possible while the situation at Central Campus is addressed, so that students can safely return. Whereas the district administration has been in communication with Lincoln Way Community High School District 210, discussed the possibility of temporarily relocating Central Campus students to the former Lincoln Way North High School facility during such time that Central Campus is unavailable. Whereas the Board has further directed the administration to explore additional options to expedite the return to in-person learning for Central Campus students. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County. Section one, the preamble of this resolution are hereby adopted, preamble of the whereas statements that came before. Section two, the Board hereby authorizes the superintendent or his designated to negotiate intergovernmental agreement with Lincoln Way Community High School District 210. The temporary use of former Lincoln Way North High School facility to provide in-person learning during such time that Central Campus building is unavailable. The Board further authorizes the superintendent or his designated to negotiate any other contracts and agreements as may be necessary to expedite the return to in-person learning. Section four, the superintendent shall keep the Board president informed of all agreements being negotiated during this time. And all such agreements shall be presented to the Board for approval and/or ratification at the next regularly scheduled Board meeting. This resolution shall be in full force and affect upon its, its passage. It's really a decision before you is to adopt this resolution, or you could adopt this resolution, or you could wait until we, we have all those intergovernmental agreements, all those rental agreements. The next time you meet is November twentieth. Our recommendation to you is obviously to adopt this resolution so that we can have students at Lincoln Way North, maybe as early as Monday, hopefully by Wednesday. Those are the sort of target points. If we go a different direction, we could explore that as well, right? But that would also, Lincoln Way has a Board meeting Thursday night. You would empower their Board then to enact a similar resolution, empowering their superintendent to negotiate with us. That is the way that it would move the quickest, to establish this plan. But, but that's obviously, you know, a, a choice that you have to make. And adopting this resolution is the action item that we're, we're putting in front of you tonight.
So essentially what we're looking at here is just making sure that the administrative team has the ability to do all of the necessary negotiations and just keep the Board updated and present them at regularly scheduled Board meetings so we're not needing to meet every other day when a new item comes in.
You, you would, exactly, Dr. Shaw. You would if you went a different direction. You know, you would, every time we have an agreement, you would have to meet to approve it. You obviously have to ultimately approve these agreements, you have to see them, approve them. But you'd be empowering me and the team to, to move forward. You know, the important piece there is and designated, because as you can guess, one reason why we presented this way is there's a lot of moving parts. You know, all of these very fine and competent people, you know, I trust to, to enact things, right? You know, the name of the game here is trying to get students back into the classroom.
As quickly as possible, as quickly as possible. Because I, you know, by not passing this resolution, also the Board will be meeting every other day, making decisions, and that pushes more of the kids out.
So for example, Bill would be able to talk with Mr. Welke over at Lincoln Way as, as often as possible when it comes to buildings and grounds and things that needs to, need to happen. Cheryl Kay would be able to speak with Mr. Duserhoff, just regarding technology, things like that.
You would empower us tomorrow to have Service Pro start working and cleaning the building. If you go a different direction, you'd have to approve that contract with Service Pro, for example.
Yeah.
So rather than powering us to hire them and execute that, we would have to wait until your authorization to, to do that. So that's, that's kind of the difference. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
I would like to ask that. When you do your Friday update.
Right.
That you let us know what you, so a list of what was done.
Here's what was done, right?
And I know in the past, actually, McBride, you've always kept us informed, you know, even through phone calls. I mean, it wasn't just, I know it says right here, keep the Board President informed of all the agreements. But even during the pandemic, he was keeping us all informed because we also had a resolution giving them the power for that. But, but he was always keeping us on top. You were always keeping us informed of everything. So, okay. Yes.
I don't know if there's any question about the resolution method. Lincoln Way is planning on presenting a resolution that authorizes their superintendent and team to work with us. But they're obviously not going that direction at Lincoln Way if, if you're not going that direction, right? So they need a, they need a signal with you, from you, of how quickly you're moving to get students, you know, in that building. This also, you know, is your agreement, your, your decision that Lincoln Way North is where students are gonna go.
So you had given us a list of agreements earlier. Is there anything else in addition to that list?
It's not exhaustive. You know, once we get into this kind of thing, you can find that, you know, you know, some other thing comes up that you just didn't anticipate. Some need tomorrow as people get, get in, you know, there's some contractor need, there's a plumbing need, there's a flooring or a ceiling tile need. All, all of that is, is possible. The scope doesn't seem to be enormous. But that, that list that I showed earlier, I wouldn't say that's exhaustive. It just gives an idea of, I think what you have to do is you have to decide if you're going to manage this list as a board, right? You as seven people, or, and it, there's likely more when you get into projects like this. Or if you're by resolution, going to have us manage that list, execute that on behalf of our students, and then, you know, keep you informed. There are agreements you do have to vote on. Intergovernmental agreement, rental agreement, everything related to Central. I know we pivoted away from that, bidding processes, things like that, you know, that would, would come down. But it would just make us a little bit more nimble and act quicker. And so, you know, really you're the deciders on that.
Me, me myself, I'm, I'm willing to agree to let Dr. McBride and his administration to make the decisions for the Board. That's just my personal feeling.
So are we looking for a motion to approve the resolution?
Right. You would need, you know, on this agenda item, and we've kind of used different slides, you'd have, you know, you'd have to be, have a motion to approve, you know, the resolution as presented. You know, obviously second in the vote, that, that kind of thing.
Well, yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as written.
I second.
It's been motioned second, motion by Dr. Shaw, and second by Ms. Johnson. Any questions? We'll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Before I vote, can I just say one thing? I'm just so proud of us, just everybody, all of the administration that's involved, just the community as a whole. Here I thought that we would be in online learning up until like Thanksgiving, up until December. And I, like, you know, it's just a pessimist in me that's like, you know, this is, this is not gonna go well. Everything, everything's falling apart, nothing's like gonna happen. And I was wrong. I was so wrong. I've never been happier to be wrong. I feel like taking a lap in the parking lot as soon as this like resolution is passed. I can't, who said Monday? We're gonna be back in.
Well, well, don't, you know, like.
Mr. Navarro, is this a yes?
I'm very, I'm very enthused, I, you know, don't, don't let my horse run amok without me. That, that's what we would try, right? And much to Mr. Borsman's question, um, uh, point. Things come up, right? You know, some, if you ever work on your house, three trips to the hardware store, that was a good, uh, project, right? You know, that was efficient. Sometimes it's five. So based on the best of our knowledge right now, that's, that's what we're gonna try to target. There, I would, I want to put a caveat there. We, we absolutely want to make sure that our staff has the right amount of time to get themselves set, right? They can get in, get set, feel like they're ready, just to get off on the good foot is so, so important, right?
We also need the occupancy permit.
We need an occupancy permit. We have stuff we need, yeah.
So what's your problem?
Yes, let's go. Come on, let's go. I'm sorry, I'm just super enthused by this. This is like the most I've been enthused in a long time.
This is Maxwell is taking that as a yes.
Yes. I, I'm sorry, this is the most enthused I've been in a while.
Yes. Travis?
Yeah.
Borsma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Canino?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McBride.
You're welcome.
And thank you to everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Do, do you want to take a small break before public comment?
Yes, yes, let's take a small break, five-minute break.
Five-minute break. Five minute break.